They got you running point over there, Brad?
No.
You banging down low?
I'm banging bodies down low.
All right, great. Thanks, Terry. My name is Paul Tagliferi. I'm the Chair of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals. It is February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, past the hour of seven P M. This open meeting of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty three, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty three. All members of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This act allows the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair knows otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Susie Suzelika?
Here.
Martha Rutan?
Here.
Brad Blanchett?
Here.
Jeff Grabowski?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Yeah.
Robert Federico?
Here.
All right, just some, uh, some quick ground rules. Uh, for presenters or applicants listening to the agenda, the Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is deal to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to, to the comments of others, do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board Committee will be conducted by a roll call vote. Uh, for members, uh, for items with public comments, um, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments. This will occur after our hearing. Um, by phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand and wait for the, to be recognized by the Chair. Please note that part of your phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, please click raise hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the Chair. Chairless members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes, uh, for any comment. Okay, uh, so first up on the agenda tonight is a continuation of the consideration of the petition for an appeal of the inspector of buildings, zoning enforcement officers determination regarding the use of the property located at three, three, nine dash three, three, four, West Main Street, map eighty one, parcel sixteen and seventeen in the Business West zoning district and groundwater protection overlay district area three submitted by Trade B Treatment and Recycling of Northborough LLC. Okay. Uh, so I believe Lori, we have Mark Donahue. Mark, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me yet?
Yes, I can hear you, Mark. How you doing?
Good. How's everyone?
Good. Uh, is there anyone else you are expecting, um, on this call tonight?
Uh, should be Steve Rodriguez.
Okay.
See him.
Yes, the Chair. I do.
Steve Rodriguez, is it here? You can hear me?
Hey, Steve, how you doing?
I'm fine. How about yourself?
Uh, doing great. Uh, so Mark, is it just you, uh, you and Steve for speakers?
This is it. We're playing shorthanded against all of you. We're doing our best.
Okay. Um, so, so just to summarize, um, and Mark, we'll, we'll get to you in just a sec. Uh, so just to summarize sort of what we're dealing with tonight. Um, so this is not a special permit or variance. Uh, this is an appeal of a determination by Bob Federico, uh, Northborough Zoning Enforcement Officer. Um, so essentially, uh, to summarize, uh, there was a letter from the applicant dated March, uh, sorry, March, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty three for, um, requesting Bob to make an, uh, an interpretation on the property. There was a subsequent follow-up email on October twentieth of two thousand and twenty three, um, in which they were requesting to, for Bob to make a determination about the use of the property. Um, I believe in the letter dated September twelfth, um, the applicant confirmed that the use of a hazardous waste facility was no longer a viable option since it had expired past the two years. Uh, but we're looking for a determination with regards to the, its use as a contractor's yard. Um, there was a response from the zoning enforcement officer, uh, in an email dated October twenty fifth of twenty three, um, which denied, um, or which denied essentially the applicant's interpretation that it was being used as a contractor's yard, um, citing uh, several points about it hadn't been, it's been over the two years and, and such. Um, and so the applicant has now filed an appeal and that is why it is before us tonight. Is that a, um, general? Is that a, a valid summary, um, of that? Okay, Bob. So, Mark, I think, I think we can start with you, um, and, and your team. If, if you kind of just want to go through sort of, um, you know, your presentation or your explanation on what exactly it is that you're looking for.
Sure. For, uh, for the record, uh, Mark Donahue from Fletcher Tilton on behalf of Tridebby Treatment and Recycling of Northborough LLC. And with me, as I indicated, is Steve Rodriguez of Tridebby, who, uh, with your authorization will provide some testimony. The Chair has adequately summarized, uh, how we got here. It's an appeal of a decision of the building inspector, which under the zoning bylaw, you, your board has jurisdiction. The, the facts are relatively straightforward, at least up to two thousand and twenty one, so they're the worst, um, you know, reciting and making sure that the table is set. Uh, the site in question, three thirty nine to, to three forty five West Main Street, had been used for an extended period of time um, by a hazardous waste contractor, previously known as Zeko Inc. Um, they, they used the site, uh, not just for the storage of equipment and vehicles, but they were also actively involved in the, uh, storage, the, uh, acceptance and the transportation of hazardous materials. Some time ago, Tridebby acquired Zeko Inc. and continued to operate the, um, the facility in the same manner for an extended period of time. It served two purposes for the company, uh, at the, through, for an extended period of time. It was licensed to receive, contain and transport hazardous materials. Some of you may recall going to the facility, both under Zeko's ownership and, and Tridebby's for hazardous waste, uh, recycling days or collection days, uh, which it served. But equally important, what it served, it was basically a base of operations for the, uh, the business with administrative offices, uh, field staff, business development people all at the facility, using it on a regular basis, together with the rear part of the site, which is fenced off physically from the rest with some security fencing and the like and screen, being used to store, uh, the, both the, the receptacles for the hazardous materials, but also vehicles, equipment, different types of, uh, equipment utilized, supplies, you know, in the nature of the business of, um, both Tridebby and before that Zeko, which was essentially dealing in the regular course of business with hazardous materials and also being responsive to release, uh, of hazardous materials, uh, into the environment in some fashion. The section or that portion of the business that dealt with dealings physically with those hazard materials by taking them and storing and transporting them through the site ceased in two thousand and twenty one. But, um, since then, it was really the issue of what has occurred. Um, to support the, uh, argument that we made to Mr. Federico that Tridebby had continued to use the site as an administrative center and also most importantly for a site that it would, field personnel would come to on essentially a daily basis to pick up company vehicles, company equipment, then go out into the field, do their business and then return at the end of the day. We had submitted the affidavit of Mr. Rodriguez, who had worked for the company for an extended period of time and was the field service manager, um, uh, until two thousand and twenty one and then continued to operate out of the facility until two thousand and twenty three. Uh, what that affidavit indicates and what Mr. Rodriguez will expand on in a moment is that the, the site consistently housed the vehicles of the company, which ran from larger, you know, vehicles of diesel-sized engines to smaller type of vehicles and also equipment that would roll such as pumps and other types of equipment as vacuum trucks, pickup trucks and other specialized vehicles, uh, in that nature. Supplies such as booms and, and other supplies utilized in the, um, handling of hazardous waste were stored on the site. Personal protective equipment to be utilized by the employees was delivered to the site and stored at the site. And that all continued until, um, two thousand and twenty three, uh, January of two thousand and twenty three, when the company consolidated, withdrew of its operations from Northborough at that time. And so the reason that this is important is to allow Tridebby to move forward and dispose of the property in some orderly fashion and to allow a potential purchaser or lesssee to know how they can utilize the property. But that needs to occur because the two years has clearly started as of January two thousand and twenty three by January two thousand and twenty five. The question is whether it can continue in two thousand and twenty four or not. Um, I think it would be helpful to the Board, Mr. Chair, with your permission, if Mr. Rodriguez will have the opportunity to explain uh, his experience and how the company operated during that period of time, the types of equipment that he utilized during that period of time. We submitted as part of his affidavit, third-party invoices for different things such as diesel exhaust fluids, um, uh, personal protective equipment, uh, fence repairs and the like. Mr. Rodriguez was involved in all of that ordering and, and supplies that he can explain at best. So with your permission, I'd like him to be able to provide the Board some testimony.
Sure, yeah.
Steve?
All right. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everyone. Uh, you have, basically, Mark said is correct. Uh, I, I started with the company back in two thousand and three, uh, when we were in active facility receiving waste and transporting it to our other treatment facilities. Uh, we, we stopped receiving in waste after a while. We were operating just as a service center out of the Northborough office. And, and what that means, we were, we were dispatching our crews and equipment from Northborough to, to cover our clients' needs and, and pretty much the Northeast, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maine, Vermont. Uh, we have similar ops in, in New Hampshire and, uh, New York. Uh, and that's how we basically continued running right until, till the last day in January of two thousand and twenty three. With that, man, we, we had a, a variety of different, uh, equipment that we ran out of there, pressure washers, trailers, kids' chairs, um, all, all, all very specific to our industry. Um, and the, the amount of people fluctuated throughout the years. We had as many as twenty-five guys working out of there, um, in, in, in the field. They were being dispatched out of there and, uh, six to eight people in the office. Um, around COVID, those numbers went down quite a bit, um, but we maintained the, a, a crew out of there and drivers. Uh, we typically had a half dozen larger commercial vehicles that ran out of that facility. And that's, that's why we had the, uh, D E F looking there. The, the trucks would, would top off their D E Fs before they go on the road in the morning. Um, they get fuel outside. We, we used to have fuel tanks there years ago. We had those rainbow, but we maintained the D E F, um, simpler for, for the drivers. And for the crews, they, they would come in, we'd dispatch them out of there. Uh, they typically go out of the yard anywhere from four in the morning to, to six in the morning. They'd go out to the customer's site, work the project and then come back at the end of the day. And those times vary, sometimes very late at night, six, seven o'clock at night. And same, same applied for the drivers. Um, after COVID, it, it was getting harder to find people and shortly they took a look at the business. We have another operation in Stoughton, Mass, where we received, uh, waste that we decided to consolidate very thanks. So that's why we shut down, uh, the operations in Northborough. But I, I kept an office there right to the last day from, I can't remember from two thousand, the end of two thousand and three until two thousand and twenty three.
And, Burton, i- if I might, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Perhaps, um, Steve, you can explain what, um, diesel exhaust fluid, uh, does or how it is handled? Uh, and from the invoices submitted, you were receiving, um, you know, fairly large quantities, um, of close to two hundred gallons at a time of that, and how that demonstrates the use of the vehicles out of that site?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, uh, the newer, the newer diesel vehicles always require the, the fluid as part of the emissions. Um, it's, uh, the, the, you basically go through a tank of D E F fluid with a tank of fuel. Um, all, all the commercial trucks that would go out there, they, they would use the D E F that we provided at the facility before they go out in the road and then they'd fill up the diesel at, at a commercial fill-up basin, um, for, for wherever we had an account. Um, but e- e- every single commercial diesel vehicle that, that we've purchased in the last ten years are in the D E F. And if the truck needed it or not, they would top off every day. That's what, uh, we kept the supply of it there. Nowadays, when it first started, it was, uh, uh, harder to, to source this. They, they either have to purchase it at, at fuel stations in individual containers. Uh, now, now there's, now it's more, it's more readily available, but, um, to, to help support those trucks, we, we made it available at, uh, every location that trucks are dispatched from.
Okay. Thanks. Um, Bob, you have a quick question?
I just wanted to add something to what Steve said about, um, diesel exhaust fluid. Um, it's, it's a, the material itself, if people are wondering if it's toxic or poisonous or whatever, um, it is not dangerous to the environment. Um, so it cannot be treated as a fuel or a toxic chemical or something that is a petroleum product. It's basically a mixture of urea and, uh, just, uh, purified water that gets mixed in with the diesel exhaust, um, and it provides for cleaner, um, emissions, uh, for the diesel-powered vehicle. So if anybody's wondering if this def fluid is what it's referred to is dangerous to the environment, realizing that this was a site that had toxic chemicals on it, it is not a danger. Um, so there's, there's, there's no worry about, you know, well, diesel exhaust fluid is on site, it's toxic, it's poisonous, it's dangerous. It is not. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. I, I guess, Bob, just a quick question on that then. Um, is diesel exhaust fluid, um, sort of something that you would find, uh, in most places that would have sort of trucks that have diesel engines in it?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can, you can purchase it at almost any auto parts store or tractor supply. Uh, most of your larger truck stops have it available at the pump to pump by the gallon. Uh, you can buy it in bulk as, um, as, uh, uh, Mr. Donahue has, has stated. Um, so, you know, it, it would be acceptable to have this stuff near, um, you know, in the proximity of, of diesel-powered vehicles.
Okay. Diesel powered vehicles most likely have this sort of product around, hanging around regardless of whatever the use is. Okay.
Well, um, I, I this, I think this started back in, I forget when it started, but I think all diesel-powered vehicles manufactured over after two thousand and fifteen, I believe, or two thousand and sixteen, um, is required to have it. So even if you were to buy a diesel truck today, you know, for your home use, um, the deficit is going to be required. Uh, it's required in all highway trucks, all utility trucks, moving trucks, school buses, anything with a diesel engine with a federal Department of Transportation, uh, approval. So, thanks, Bobby. If I might, Mr. Chair, um, for, for our purposes, I, I think what the invoices indicate, which go as late as November of two thousand and twenty-two as submitted, was that significant supplies of this non-hazardous material were being received at the facility because the diesel trucks were also at the facility. And while the fueling of those with diesel fuel had stopped some time ago and they therefore got fuel in a third-party source, the reason that the deliveries are shown here is because that's where the vehicles were. And that's consistent with the contractor's yard concept. That the bylaw defines a contractor's yard in section seven dash oh, five dash oh, two, oh, I C six. Um, as, I'll just take the chance to read it. Yards including administrative offices, structures used by builder, contractor, subcontractor, landscape, but traced by a similar business dedicated to the storage of their vehicles, equipment, machinery, tools, materials, fabrications and the sale of their materials, blah, blah, blah. That's exactly what Mr. Rodriguez explained, just described to you, was being done by the company. One of the things about the nature of the business, as Mr. Rodriguez pointed out, is to the passerby and the like, it's a relatively, it was a relatively innocuous business. People would come with their passenger vehicles, park them in the lot, either go inside and do their administrative work or otherwise. The field personnel would show up early in their personal vehicles, park them there, go in the back, load up the equipment and leave for the day. Um, you know, it wasn't in and out a kind of activity. It wasn't type of, you know, people coming during the course of it. Um, I'm sure Mr. Rodriguez can describe as, as people went out, just the field personnel went out. They had multiple places to go and they didn't have a reason to return until the end of the day when they were essentially swapping out in some fashion. Uh, if there was an emergency, then the company would need to respond and there might be activities with personnel showing up at odd hours. But it was a fairly quiet, for lack of, um, a, a different term, type of business, um, which goes to the lack of any kind of physical evidence of either, um, uh, knowledge of people knowing what's going on there. That's part of the reason that the screening was on the fence was to have some level of, of privacy there with a lack of any kind of photographic evidence of, uh, large activity at the site. Um, you know, when, when the site was successful, when, um, you know, there, there wasn't a whole lot going on at the site after the morning because people were out, going out to call on customers and make business. So the, the use as described by Mr. Rodriguez, we think is four-square on the definition of contractors yard under the bylaw. Um, uh, in hindsight, we probably should have provided some more of that information to Mr. Federico, uh, in our initial submittal. Um, but we, we did not, um, uh, at that time, provide it as part of the supplemental information.
Yeah, and just to expand on that, Mark, it was very, very correct. It is, I, I, I was the operations manager, the dispatcher there for, for many, many years. And after five o'clock in the morning, it was very quiet there. Um, depending on where the guys were coming back from, there were days that I wouldn't see them either. They'd come back six, seven o'clock at night. Um, so you, you really wouldn't see, most of the time, the, the, the guys would leave before the sun was up and they'd be back way past the sun was down. Uh, there wasn't much activity at the site other than the guys loading equipment into the trucks and then leaving and then the, the opposite at the end of the day. Anybody driving by looking in, you really see anything. There'd be a few of us in the office throughout the day and, and that would be about it.
Okay. Um, so the first question I have is, uh, can you confirm when Trade B, um, started operating the site as a hazardous waste facility?
That goes back to the Zeko operation. I, I don't have that specific date, but it has to be, it has to be more than thirty years.
Yes, that's, uh, was, you, it was three different names. Zeko sold to United Industrial Services and United Industrial Services sold to Tridebby. Um, Echo was in business there since the seventies, I believe. Um, United bought Zeko in the late nineties, early two thousands and then Tridebby bought it from them in, uh, two thousand thirteen, I think it was. It, it's been in constant use and since it was built by Zeko.
Okay, so Trade B took over the, the site as a hazardous waste facility in two thousand and thirteen?
Yes, correct. Yep. They, they stopped receiving and we, we kept the permit right till two thousand and twenty one, but we physically hadn't been receiving waste and I, I don't remember exactly what year it was. It would have been a long time.
Yeah, there's, there, there's no argument. Hazardous waste receipt, uh, is, is seen in your table uses as a different use and there is no argument from the applicant that that use has lapsed, um, and cannot be renewed absent relief from this board.
Okay. So I, I guess my question is from two thousand and thirteen until, I think it was January of two thousand and twenty one, Trade B operated that site as a hazardous waste facility?
It, it was licensed as one. It, you know, it, it held a license, um, and it was required. That license and the closure proceedings happened in two thousand and twenty one. I think what Mr. Rodriguez is indicating is that before that, the company had stopped using it for hazardous waste, but I'm letting him speak to that truck.
Yep, that's right. We stopped receiving. We, we had storage tanks there as part of the permit. We stopped storing waste there, receiving in waste. It was shortly after I, I came to Northborough, two thousand and five, two thousand and six. Uh, all, all the waste was being received at our Stoughton place. So we were basically just operating that as a contractor yard. We held the permit because we had intent of, of maybe repurposing it. Uh, we were working with D E P for a long, long time, trying to come up with ideas, um, to maybe re- repurpose the permit and then in two thousand and twenty one, we decided not to and we went through the full closure.
That was a, that's a closure proceeding that is overseen by D E P and that's, that's how the two thousand and twenty one date is, is the finalization of that, the sign-off D E P.
Yep, sorry about that. Yeah, closure of the, the, the permit, not, not the facility.
Okay. Um, Lori, I, I think you had your hand raised, but it's not raised anymore. Do you have?
Um, I just want to point out that I, I was able to find a file on this property in the planning office. And there was a record in that file that as of September thirteenth, nineteen eighty-nine, the Zoning Board of Appeals issued a groundwater protection overlay special permit. And special permit was site plan review to Zeko Incorporated for construction of an unloading pad and canopy for an existing waste oil, waste gasoline and water storage facility. So that means it was operating as a hazardous waste facility at least in nineteen eighty-nine. Most likely before that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so I guess, um, with regards to the contractor's yards definition. Right? Um, is it just the fact that there was an administrative office and structure? And then you had a similar business dedicated to the storage of your vehicles, equipment, machinery? Is that what you're sort of basing your case off of in terms of the use as a contractor's yard?
The, the, the site continued until two thousand and twenty three to be used, uh, for administrative offices by a contractor, contractor involved in the hazardous waste business who also use a lot, utilized it for the storage of vehicles, equipment, machinery, tools, materials, um, involved in that business. Um, so it's, it's both components, um, uh, are, are in place here. Um, the equipment component was, uh, as if not greater in importance to the company at that, during that period of time than the administrative function. So, but they, they ran, you know, uh, together and I'm sure Mr. Rodriguez can describe how, uh, time records and billing and everything else worked from the administrative office as people came and went with equipment and everything else.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, the, the, everyone that worked out of there, pumping out of that shop, um, they had time clock space there um, for, for all the hourly employees. It is very similar. Our, our neighbors right next to us, uh, it was Volte Power back there for, for many, many years. The exact same function as we did. They, they were actually one of our competitors. Uh, we, we did the exact same type of work, same type of equipment that ran out of there. Um, it, it, it was, yeah, the administrative side of things was more for, um, convenience. Some of the, the, uh, field reps lived nearby, so they, they, they had an office there. We had some admins in there, but honestly, that, that part could have been done at any of our other locations. It was the, the, the shop that, that was the value to us. Um, we The, the shop that, that was the value to us, um, we, many of our clients were in Boston. Um, the next closest facility we had at that time was Connecticut, so dispatching crews from Connecticut to Boston didn't make sense. We were running guys out of Northborough, get closer to there and cover that part of the state.
Um, are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
Uh, yeah. Um, either from Mark or Steve, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about how much. The contractors yard aspects of the business changed after the business stopped. Receiving hazardous waste. I know, Mark, you just mentioned that. The equipment part of the business may have been more important. So does that mean that there were more? Uh, trucks stored, uh, at the yard after, uh, the business stopped receiving hazardous waste.
I, I certainly, um, through you, Mr. Chair, um. Uh, you know, like Steve can talk with more eloquently than I can, but I think he just kind of answered the question, which is. You know, there was business opportunities and business that was being fulfilled in Eastern Massachusetts, um, by Tridavay. Uh, where the equipment, if it wasn't in Northborough, the next closest piece was in Connecticut. Um, and so, uh, I assume that an awful lot of the Massachusetts area, both Metro West, greater Boston and central Massachusetts. Uh, and maybe west was serviced out of here with the, the ability to place, you know, be able to have essentially a repository for equipment. Different types of, you know, vacuum pumps and other types of pieces of equipment that go with it, other than just. Uh, a diesel, um, truck in some fashion, um, to be able to do all of that. So I think that was always an important component of it. Because there's, you know, as Mr. Rodriguez can describe in more detail, the, the business of handling hazardous waste has a lot of pieces of equipment to it. And so, and they all need someplace to go. I'm sure in its heyday. Because of the paucity of places to go, the hazardous material storage is probably really important at one point. Um, because it's not a real popular use, uh, for people. Uh, so it would be hard to measure at some point. But as I think Mr. Rodriguez indicated, even when they were taking materials for a period of time before the closure plan. There was thought about how to reactivate that and use it because it was a unique use. But Steve, maybe you can explain what kind of equipment's involved and how this became kind of a repository farm.
Right, yeah, no problem. It is, when, when we, um, were receiving in ways, uh, the. The Northborough location wasn't a treatment facility, it was just a storage facility. So we'd receive in waste from the northern part of the state. Uh, the trucks would go out, the crews would go out, they'd collect it on the trucks, they'd come back, they'd offload into the, uh, the tanks in Northborough. And then from there, they would get trucked again to a treatment facility. Uh, uh, T E R, our treatment facility at that time in Connecticut, uh, Meriden, Connecticut, Bridgeport, Connecticut, or. Oh, it's New York. Um, then we purchased the, uh, the E C C facility in, in Sooton, Massachusetts, which would. That has onsite storage and treatment. So it became more practical to bring waste directly to where it was being treated, rather than storing it in Northborough and then trucking it up. Um, so the only component of the business that actually changed was receiving in waste at Northborough. The trucks that were out collecting it still remain in Northborough. We, we kept the same amount of people, the same amount of equipment in Northborough. The only difference was the, the waste was, wasn't being stored there anymore.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Uh, Mark.
Um, uh, I'd ask, like to ask Bob. Um, I'm making a determination on this, uh. What part of their argument did you not buy? Do you think there just wasn't the activity there? Up to the twenty third, uh, the, uh, January twenty three, or do you think that, uh. It was just not sufficient as a contractor yard for what was going on there?
Um, sure, I can answer that. Um, back in. Uh, let me get it. I received the request to make that, the, the determination, whether it's contractor yard or not. Back in the fall and, um, I sent the determination out. We had a couple of email chats back and forth. And basically I, I, I thought I intimated that, you know, I didn't have enough evidence. To show that it was in fact used as a contractor yard within the past two years. It wasn't until February sixteenth or twentieth, when I received, uh, the latest package of, um. Uh, information with the invoices and things like that, 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 that attempted to describe. You know, the fact that they were using it as a contractor's yard. Okay, so in, in the meantime, uh, the appeal, um, the request for the appeal had been filed. Okay, so I didn't receive this any additional package any sooner or later than, than when you did. Um, after reviewing it, I, I looked at a few things and, you know, I, I, I don't. I don't distrust the affidavit of, of, of Steve Rodriguez. I've, I've met him once or twice and he's a fine gentleman and I've got no reason to doubt what he's saying. Um, some of the invoices, especially for the deaf, um, are. Kind of beyond the two years and I, I think they're kind of outdated. I suppose you could use them as evidence that some sort of a contractors yard was used. But the, all of the, uh, Dennis Burke invoices are literally old, um, in, in, in terms of this exercise. Um. That being said, you know, I drive by that facility every day. Um, and I have not noticed the type of activity that, that, that has been described. As, as a contractors yard of any type or having that many people on site. Um, that's my observation. Uh, I've also, um, you know, looked at, um, you know, several aerial. Um, photos, you know, whether it's Google Earth or whatever, and going back a few years to see what kind of activity has been going on. And I'm looking for trucks and the types of equipment that they're talking about, and I hadn't seen any. So. You know, the, the documents appear to be legitimate. I'm not gonna doubt that. But I don't have enough evidence to feel comfortable falling off of the top of the fence on either side. So I think in this case, um, you know, because of my inability to make a decision clear cut one way or the other. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm deferring to you folks to, 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 to see how you feel about this.
Right, so there's nothing overwhelmingly convincing here that would drive you to. Reverse your decision outright, but then again.
I, you know, I, I, like I said before, I have, I really have nothing either way to be conclusive and, and feel confident about it. Um, that, that's why, you know, I think you folks are gonna have a, a kind of a bigger role to play in, in, in see where your comfort level is. Um, um, like I said, you know, this information came a little bit late and I reviewed as much of it as I could. But I, I, I don't have enough to, to fall off the fence on this one.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just if you don't mind me adding, it, 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 I completely understandable. If, if you were driving by during the day, it, it wouldn't look like anything was happening there, other than an office with some lights on. Everything that happened, happened behind the fence and, and it happened early in the morning, late at night during the day. It was, it, I'm smirking, but I'd imagine a landscape company is, right? But they store their equipment, they, they load their trucks and then off they go. Uh, that's essentially what our guys did. Uh, you know, normal, normal business hours that, uh, you'd probably see my truck. And that, where there's a, a, a tree line, um, for the, for the front of the yard. Uh, if you're facing the property off to the left, that's where almost everyone parked their personal vehicles. It was kind of hidden from the road a bit. Um, that, that's another reason that, to the, to the right where it's wide open, there was only one or two folks that parked on that side. Um, and, and many of our guys had company vehicles too. So they'd go there, load up their equipment and then they, they. Uh, go to the job site, come back unload and they take those vehicles home. Um, so some of those vehicles weren't stored in store there overnight. The larger ones definitely were. Uh, there, there's still some utility trucks parked there today that we haven't, haven't gotten out of there yet. There's still some equipment sitting there, we still have to get out. Um, but, you know, it was active right until the day, um, Tridavay made the business decision to shut, shut it down.
Okay, thanks. Um, Bob, I, I guess I have a question. Yeah, you know, I mean, it, it sounds like this property. Has been used since, say, the nineteen seventies or eighties as a hazardous waste facility. Um, and in, uh, twenty, two thousand nine, when the bylaws changed, that sort of made hazardous waste facilities. And contractors yards and the rest of like in Business West, um, no longer an option. I guess. It sounds like the principal use though of this site is a hazardous waste material and the contractors yard. Or the section of the contractors yard that the applicant is making a case for is sort of. Um. An accessory to what the actual principal uses, meaning like they're a hazardous waste facility, they're transporting hazardous waste. Oh, by the way, we contract out with our trucks to pick up the, the waste and bring it back from one spot to another. And so I guess when they ceased operating as a hazardous waste facility. And then let's say they continue using trucks there. Right? That means that their accessory use would move to a principal use and therefore an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. Would that be? Does that sound?
The, the use of a hazardous waste facility slash contractors yard, um. I, I, I think they kind of went hand in hand when the. Um, hazardous waste operation was enforced and they had the storage tanks and whatnot. Um, I don't, I don't think there's any really denying that. Um, but all of that becomes pre-existing non-conforming. Um, it's very easy to determine that the, you know, the chemical storage and the chemical processing or whatever it is they were doing with that stuff. Um, you know, ceased when they took the tanks out, you know? So the remainder is, you know, were they really? You know, I, 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 I haven't seen the, the visual evidence that that's actually been using that as a contractors yard. Excuse me, for the past couple of years. That, that's, that's where I, that's where I fail to see, um, the evidence.
Okay.
If, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Um. Sure.
I mean, if, I'm, I'm not gonna deny this, this, we don't have any photographs. It's, it's not a real photogenic kind of business that, that, you know, end up with that. But, you know, you have the testimony, the live testimony of somebody who says he was there. Was in a position of responsibility, as you indicated, Mr. Frederico, you came to know him and, and, you know. And he's had opportunity to know he was a position in, in that kind of position. And you have evidence that demonstrates that the type of materials. That are related to a contractors yard, such as a diesel exhaust fluid. Such as the type of equipment listed in the FAS and all, um, uh, invoices. Um, of gloves and vests and, um. Uh, glasses and eye wash and the like are all consistent with contractors coming to and from the site. Um, so while this, there isn't a photograph, I think, I think Mr. Rodriguez explains pretty well why there isn't. Because of the nature of the business. Are they trying to split the use that pre-existed zoning essentially as a defined use going back that far? Um, between one and, between a use and the other and saying that one was accessory to the other misses the point. The business in and of itself wasn't simply receiving, containing and transporting material. From third parties. That business doesn't have an existence. It was critical to the business going back to when Zeko had it all the time through what Mr. Rodriguez had. Is the ability to take equipment, go into the field, go to a customer's site, get that material. And then take it to where it has to be either stored or ultimately treated in some fashion. The equipment is as equally important as the storage of the, of the material to the business. You can't do one, you can, you can clearly do, you can get by with simply just having the storage of the equipment. Because that's what is working in for the site during that period of time. But to suggest that somehow there was, it was a minor use. Um, when they stopped receiving material as a waste station. I think this is the point as to as Mr. Rodriguez explained it, the business grew so that it could actually. The material could be one stop, one touch, take it to where it's gonna be stored and treated.
If, if you want to mine, uh, to make a clearer picture, is a lot of these trucks that were collecting the waste, uh, the crew were there loading the trucks. So a, a large portion of our business is industrial cleaning. A lot of the large oil storage tanks that you'd see for, for the petroleum industry, that's what the guys at that. Facility were doing. They were going to the customer sites, they, they were gearing up, going inside those tanks, shipping them out into our bag trucks. And our bag trucks would take that to our facilities to offload. And, and like I mentioned, it, it was, the, the difference was that they weren't offloading in Northborough anymore. Excuse me, they were offloading in Sooton or Meriden and then coming back to Northborough to park the truck. And the same thing with, with the crew, after they were done loading a truck or done for the day, that's what they would also. They, they want to go back to the treatment facility, they come back to the yard.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions from the board? Um, all right, uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, if you are in the audience. Um, please click the raise hand if you're on Zoom or please dial star nine, uh, if you are on by phone. Uh, okay, uh, so first I have Andy and Patty Crest. If you could just please, uh, state your name and address. Hi, Andy or Patty?
Uh, Patty Crest, Patricia Crest. I'm here with my husband, Andy.
Hi.
Hi, we live at sixty old Colonial Road, which is directly across the street from the parcel in question. I can tell you that in the past, there had been a lot of activity on that site, especially at four o'clock in the morning. The diesel trucks would quite frequently wake me up at four o'clock in the morning when there was activity. But I have not seen any activity similar to that in over two years, thankfully. And also in regard to that fence that is there, that is falling down, that is tree damage that I can see through. I see that property from behind every day. So I can tell you that the activity has not been there in the last two years. There is just broken down vehicles, vehicles that I do not see moving. There's, from my personal experience from what I witness every day, there is not the activity. That was just told to you. That, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you. All right, um. Next, we have Eric Hanson. If you could just please, uh, state your name and address.
Yes, my name's, uh, Hanson, Six Buck Hill Road. Um, can you all hear me?
Uh, yes, fair.
Um, I, I, I would also like to just reiterate what, uh, Patty said just a moment ago and that I have not seen any trucks as they claim over the last two years. I drive out every single morning. I'm a school teacher. I leave around six forty-five in the morning. There's no, no activity. There's nothing happening. The only time I've seen a truck has been about a month ago, one of their pump trucks was parked there. One day it just showed up. It didn't move for a month. In fact, you could even see that from the snow tracks. They never went back there and plowed. They never moved it, nothing. And then all of a sudden it just disappeared. And I can't help, I'm sorry, but to think that they parked that truck there in hopes that maybe a satellite image would say, hey, look, we're still using it as a contractors yard. There's been nothing else there. The last point I would just wanted to ask is, if it was a waste facility and it was used as a waste facility until two thousand and twenty one. As their permit, then my question would be, how are they allowed, knowing it's a non-conforming use? To just all of a sudden change their, um, identification to a contractors yard? And shouldn't that have been run by the board first, rather than to just say, oh yeah, now we're a contractors yard. Oh. And shouldn't that have been run by the board first, rather than to just say, oh, yeah, now we're a contractor's yard. Oh, now we're this. Now we're a welding shop. Now we're, like, it it seems crazy to me that they can just say, oh, no, we were still using it as a contractor's yard. Most of the material also in the back there has been sitting still for well over two years. They have a lot of stuff. I would say they're not even using any of it. It's just been left behind until they eventually sell the property. That's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Eric. So I see a hand raised for, it just says Marchese. Hello? If you could just please state your full name and your address.
Can you hear me?
Hi, yes, if you could just.
Yeah, okay, so Jason Mar- Jason Marquez, Nineteen Buck Hill Road. A couple of things. I leave for work at five thirty in the morning. Pretty much every day I go to Cambridge, drive a long haul. For the last two years, I have not seen any activity, heard any any activity. There's been many years ago, four years ago, that a lot of issues of 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 noise in 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 complaints and stuff. Not to mention, I walk by that facility in the deterioration of that facility over the last two years. Clearly, I see it as nobody's there. The deterioration of that whole property, the the fences that have fallen down, there's obviously no activity on that facility. And you can walk by it and drive by it and 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 you can just see, there's no no one mowing the lawn, the 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 cracks, the the everything, the the whole building is falling apart. So for, you know, you can't blame that on a COVID. It's 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 not an active site for the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Kramer. If you could just please state your name and your address. Hi, Michael.
Hi, good afternoon or evening. Michael Kramer, One Buck Hill Road. I'd just like to echo similarly to the previous statements that this does not appear to be used and or upkept in the same manner. This, I live directly behind that property, right next to the old Colonial address that was mentioned earlier. And I completely agree with everything my my colleagues and neighbors and had said recently.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. All right. I don't see any other hands raised, hands raised in the audience. Brad, you want to just confirm that you agree with that?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair. Yep, I don't see any other hands raised in the audience or under the attendees tab.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board or staff at this time? Okay. Susie?
Yeah, one, sorry.
I'll just add, I I drive by different nights of the week for the past couple of years for dance, and I've never seen any activity later at night. I know a lot of the callers have been saying in the morning, and I know Bob had said he drives by every day, so I'll just add in that I drive by for dance anywhere between the four o'clock to like seven thirty timeframe, and I I haven't seen any activity for that. And I was going to mention it in the discussion, but since the callers have been mentioning and Bob mentioned earlier, I'll just throw that in as well. Thank you. So I'll 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 do that as a caller right now. Thanks.
If I might, press chair.
We're just gonna go with Brad for real quick, and then Mark, I will give you a chance to respond to, give you the last word on stop. Brad, did you have a question?
No, Mr. Chair, but there is one more hand raised under the attendee tab.
Okay, I'll just get to so there is a number, last three digits, two, three, one. If you can just
Star six to unmute.
Star six to unmute. Thank you, Lord. So if you were on the phone and raised your hand, last three digits, two, three, one, if you can press star six to unmute your line.
Hello.
Hello, yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Please just state your name and your address, please.
Yep, this is this is Paul Kraus, Ten Buck Hill Road.
Hi, Paul. Hello? You just, yeah, you just went on mute. If you can press star six, please.
There we are.
Here we go. Hi, Paul.
Okay, hi, yep.
Yeah.
I think, can you hear me now? Okay, okay, great. So, all right, hi. So Paul Kraus, Ten Buck Hill Road, without going over, you I I I've been pressing star six. It it keeps, can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you. Paul, we can hear you.
Okay, all right, okay. So so the the the, without without, you know, going back over, the the grass in the front hasn't been cut for more than two years, as Jason said. The fencing in the back, the trees have been falling all over it. And and there has been no upkeep on that property. The 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 biggest thing that before before they left, they were they were working on cars and like, kind of like hot rod truck type of cars, making a lot of noise. What if 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 they were always working on cars before, does that them say now they can they can fix automobiles at this facility? You know, and just make the make the and change the use of it for whatever they were doing there that they shouldn't have been doing anyway? I mean, it's 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 ridiculous, you know, to, and and I drive, I walk at noon, I walk in the afternoons, I walk at night. And I I believe Mr. Frederico is absolutely correct that that there is not the activity that that they are purporting. You don't see delivery trucks there. You don't see anything going on there whatsoever for the last two or three years. And last time they were trying to do something, I want to say three or four years ago, I called their Tridabi, and they said at that time, they hadn't had any any work being done at that facility for two or three years prior to that. They said they basically pulled out of there. And that's when I called whatever the the other Tridabi office was, wherever it was, Braintree or I I forget where it was, but I, that's that's all I have to say. And and there's there's absolutely no way that that the amount of I, when you walk by behind that facility, you know, you you see, you don't see anybody going in or out of that. They're not, they're not doing it. That's that's just false that 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 there that there's all this activity going on there. Thank you very much. Joanne here would like to say something, too.
Hello, Joanne Kraus, Ten Buck Hill Road.
Hi, Joanne.
Hi, I just wanted to ask, I thought that it's zoned for Business West. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and we have been fighting this company at the end of our street, you know, so close to our drinking water now for twenty-five years. And, you know, we finally thought that they were gone and there was no activity there for over two years. We finally thought we wouldn't have to deal with it anymore. And I'm just asking you, since we now know this is a, it's zoned as Business West, I appeal to you to please vote no to and do not allow these people to move in here.
Okay, so so just, okay, thanks. So just for clarity, the applicant asked the zoning enforcement officer for a determination on the current use as a contractor's yard. Bob's initial determination was that it was not used as a contractor's yard, and they are appealing his decision. So that's why we are here to, we are here today. So
Okay.
Let's just kind of, just to
All right, I'm just appealing to you to, yeah, to to deny that then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, I guess back to the board. Brad, did you have a question or was that was that just?
Nope, just want to let you know there someone had their hand raised.
Thank you. All right, so does the board or staff have any other questions or comments for the applicant at this time? Okay, Mark and Steve, I'll give you, you guys can have one last chance to rebut or answer questions or ask questions.
Sure, thank you for the opportunity. So ju- just to put the the testimony of of the neighbors in context, there's no disagreement that the facility has not been used in the last thirteen months. Mr. Rodriguez's affidavit indicates it was fully closed in July, I'm sorry, that January of two thousand twenty-three. No, no disagreement that there's no activity in the last thirteen months. What it sounds like is that there's some question or difference in memory as to what happened perhaps during calendar year two thousand twenty-two or even late two thousand twenty-one. And I guess I'd ask Mr. Rodriguez to, if he if he can recall, talk about the process of Tridabi ultimately repositioning all of this equipment and how that went through the course of two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, so that once we made the decision that that we were going to close the permit the waste receiving side of the business at Northborough, the tanks that were stored in the tank farm there were removed. They were actually shipped to our our plant in Nashville, Tennessee. And then we went through the full EPA closure. They 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 did the whole process there in two thousand twenty-one. We we had physically stopped putting waste in those tanks. Like, I can't remember the year, but it was two thousand five, two thousand six, somewhere around that era. Like I mentioned before, the the that equipment remained, the tanks and the pumps, the offloading, those tanks were still there, just not being used. And so we we thought maybe there was going to be a different use for the property with that permit. And then we we just decided not to. But the guys were still being dispatched out of there to perform the service work, like I said before, and bringing the waste to our other facility. And that, like I said, was an act of, you know, the amount of people that did work out of there very near a year towards the end. It was not not nearly as many as we had in in the late nineties, early two thousands. But there was, and out of there, right, right up until I got notice on on January twenty-seventh, I believe, that that on Monday, we're relocating all the people and equipment on January thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Steve.
No problem.
Mark, Mr. John here, do you have any, do you guys have anything further to add here?
No, we don't, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So then I guess at this time for the board, I should say, I should ask the board, do you feel comfortable with closing the case at this particular time? Don't all speak at once?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm comfortable closing the hearing if my other zoning board members agree with that. Be happy to make a motion.
Mark, Jeff, Susie, do you guys?
I'll, yeah, I would second the most, the motion.
Okay, so Brad made a motion.
The information we need.
Okay. So Brad made a motion to close the hearing. Mark seconded. We will do a roll call vote. Brad?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Susie?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. Thank you very much, Mark and Steve. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I think for this case, just to kind of lay the ground or the groundwork, ground rules, whatever. So this is obviously i- i- an appeal of of zoning enforcement officers, zoning interpretation. In order for the board to overrule sort of Bob's determination, the board would need to vote in a super majority, meaning that there would need to be four out of the five members voting to overturn Bob's determination that this is not a contractor's yard. So whatever motion that gets made, we can make a motion to overturn Bob's decision and then take a vote whether if we think Bob is wrong, we would vote yes to overturn. If we agree with Bob, we would vote no to deny the appeal. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I always hate these things, kind of confusing and backwards and stuff, I feel like. So I guess I'll just go first. I'll give my initial thoughts. The thing I struggle with with this one is I don't see enough evidence there to overturn Bob's decision that it is a contractor's yard. There is, you know, testimony and affidavit from the applicant or an employee of of the the business that's there. But I felt like the physical evidence, the pictures, something more than just an invoice for diesel fluid, which, you know, to Bob's answers to my questions earlier, seems like it's a regular, not household type of substance, but something that if you have a diesel truck, you are buying this diesel fluid for whatever, meaning that if you're big ol' nurseries and you have trucks and diesel engines or whatever, you're buying this sort of thing. So I don't think that that necessarily constitutes enough evidence. I also don't think that, you know, a a a fence, you know, buying a fence would constitute that it's being used as a contractor's yard. I just don't think that there was enough evidence from the applicant for the the time difference in turn in terms of, you know, from January twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three, when they said that it was still being used as a contractor's yard for for me to overturn Bob's decision. That's kind of my perspective on that. So who wants to go next?
Mr. Chair?
Brad?
Yeah, I would agree with Bob's interpretation as well. This property has come in front of the zoning board in the past, and I want to, for lack of a better term, this property has been under a microscope for the last few years, whether it's been by residents, town staff, including Bob, and myself personally, driving by, seeing it falling more and more into disrepair. The privacy fence going up immediately after the fact that another case for this property went in front of us. I I just don't see any evidence or anything that the applicant has said tonight to overturn what our zoning enforcement officer has brought to us this evening.
That's right. Mark?
I would disagree in that I feel that the, no disrespect to Bob, but the people who were there every day are saying that they were using it as operations that are for a contractor yard. Were they using it every day or continuously? As such, no, but that's not in the definition that you have to use it. You know, it's four days a week or anything else. It just means that in that time period, wasn't used as a contractor's yard. I see them loading, I they are testifying that they were loading equipment into trucks occasionally and storing equipment there, which fits the definition of the contractor's yard. I think that they went out of their way to present documentation as far as the invoices that they were using it. I know that this information wasn't presented to Bob in a timely manner, but I think that it it tips the scale, and I don't think that it tips the scale and I don't think that a decision that this is not a contractor's yard would survive appeal to a higher court.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Susie?
I I tend to agree with Bob that I mean, he's he's the eyes and ears and as as Brad said, he's been watching this property over the past couple of years and it's been, I I wasn't on the board when this property came before you guys, so but Bob was. And as he also said that, I don't think that that these are enough in invoices. I don't really think that they are enough. And I mean, I was kind of surprised by all the neighbors calling in and they are kind of the eyes and ears. They, I was surprised also by the lack of if this was a contractor's yard and you have the equipment and you have everything going on there, the lack of like security camera footage or the lack of upkeep, on the lack of if the stuff is still being stored there, the how the property has just gone downhill so much too. So all of those factors, I'm I'm really leaning with Bob on this. He's the the person that I'm siding with, so. That's it. I repeated myself a lot, so I apologize, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, Susie. Jeff?
Yeah. I think I'm more on the fence on this one. I think that the applicant's materials are relatively compelling and until we heard from the neighbors, I don't think I had much reason to doubt their materials, especially the affidavit. And while the neighbor's testimony, I think, is compelling, I think memories do get, it's hard to remember what you saw driving down the street two years ago. I don't remember what I saw driving down the street two days ago. However, I think that I think it's also telling that the applicant couldn't come up with some more evidence that it yard has been is being used as a contractor's yard. Because I think that if they had it, then they would have provided us with it. So that's that's what I got.
Right, I I, yeah, I think Jeff, just to kind of, you know, your your point about the the evidence, sorry, it's not like they provided no evidence. They have some evidence that there was activity on the yard. I think for me, you know, just whether it's more like work receipts or, you know, excise tax for the trucks being located. I mean, if there is these trucks that are parked there, that they're always there, you know, they may be registered within North Borough. There needs to be something more than we got deliveries of, you know, screws and hammers and stuff and you know, diesel fluid for diesel trucks. I mean, you can have a residential vehicle, have a diesel truck, which you need the fluid, but I think I just need to see more if it was actually a contractor's yard for commercial use for me. But okay. Does anyone else have anything to to add or?
Mark? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the proposal that we vote to override the decision of Mr. Frederico on declaring and declare this to be a contractor's yard. Therefore, a vote yes would be to override him and a vote no would be to hold uphold his decision. Is that that good enough for everyone?
Yeah. Jeff, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, so Mark made a motion to approve the appeal, to approve the applicant's appeal to overrule the building inspector's decision. So a vote of yes would mean that you disagree with Bob and a vote of no means you would agree with Bob's interpretation as set forth on this initial appeal. Is that? Yep, so Mark made the motion and Jeff seconded, so we will do a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brad?
No.
Susie?
No.
And I'm an O. So the applicant's appeal is not approved and the decision to overrule has been denied. So next up on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes for January twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the minutes from our January tw- sorry, what was it, twenty?
Three.
Twenty-third, as submitted.
Second. Okay, Brad made a motion to approve the minutes, Mark seconded, roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Susie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. So our next meeting is March twenty-sixth. Lori, do you know if the fire station will be coming in front of us for that meeting?
Yes, so they will be coming for variance. I'm not quite sure how many variances, they're they're finalizing that right now. So this is considered a by right use under the groundwater protection overlay district. So they will not be coming to you for site plan approval. They're going to be going to the planning board for site plan approval, since there is no groundwater special permit.
And then we won't have a meeting on the twenty-third of April, and then our next meeting after that will be the twentieth of May. Okay, so I guess i- is the goal, do you know? Has the deadline passed for the March meeting yet, or is that?
So they did ask for a couple of more days and I decided to give them the leeway because there is no April meeting. So we are going to be able to accept their application a couple of days late and still meet our advertising requirement, so I did waive waive that strict deadline.
Okay, and is that the only application for that meeting?
As far as I know.
Okay. And then I guess in terms of any other business, has there been any sort of updates with planning board bylaws? I guess what are the next steps there? I know that they had their public meeting last week or two weeks ago. Are they closer to finalizing sort of the bylaws and are there any big changes from when we met with them?
There aren't any major changes, but there are some changes to the the highway business Southwest District. So they will allow auto filling stations as a special permit use by the planning board. They did take a number of the uses that were originally slated for planning board special permit and they switched them over to ZBA special permit. So generally, in locations where the ZBA was pretty much across the board already approving those specific uses. There were a couple of split uses where planning board was the special permit authority in the industrial district. So they did, some of those, they switched over to you folks and some of those, they switched over. They kept as planning board approval. There were some additional modifications that were made to the signed bylaw and there were some changes that were recommended by town council, which of course are are kind of a given, we that we make those adjustments to make them legal. So I'm in the process of tracking those changes and when I'm complete, then I will send it to you folks so you can see the changes that were made. They did continue the public hearing to March fourth. So we're going to be meeting on the Monday instead of the Tuesday because of the election. And the reason to continue the public hearing is because we're still waiting for an updated analysis from Judy Barrett on the developable land for the MBTA bylaw. And we did receive the affordability analysis. If you folks are interested, I'd be happy to forward those to you. It also has been uploaded, I believe, by now to the MBTA information page, which is linked to the planning department page. So if you want to look there, I'll just send you a link just to to make it easier for you folks. Please.
Thanks, Lori.
Yes. That would be great, thank you.
What's, what time is that meeting on March fourth?
It's going to start at six o'clock.
Conferences that night too.
I guess, just thinking about this, Lori, the 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 fire station, I believe there's like the variances would be setbacks and for height, right?
Yeah, actually, Bob can probably speak to that. We had a conversation, I had a conversation with the architect. She was arguing that the hose tower would not meet the definition for habitable floor area and therefore the height of the hose tower should be excluded from the height calculation. And Chris Bob is the zoning enforcement officer, so I kicked her over to him to make that determination. So Bob, maybe you want to speak to that.
It's not the clock tower?
It's, yeah. It's it's a hose tower that's strictly used for draining hoses and training. And I referred to the Mass State Building Code for the definition of habitable space. And it talks about spires and things like that, and it basically says any kind of utility areas, closets, this is there's a definition, I believe I sent an email to Lori about this. Basically, the bottom line is that the the tower does not constitute a habitable space. So it's treated kind of like a steeple or spire, you know, a decorative element or something like that, simply because the interior is not considered habitable under the state building code definition.
So kind of like the Gillette Stadium lighthouse?
No, it's not going to look like that, but it's it's something like that.
You'd be able to see downtown North Borough from the li- lighthouse? Just kidding.
So I did, I did receive some revised plans late last week that I finished my review today and there were a couple of other issues that were brought to my attention having to do with the signage. And so those, the the two signs may or may not come before you for variances as well. That's something that kicked over to Bob Frederico again to to chime in on whether they would be considered nonprofit signs or not, so Bob.
I I, to address that question, I, the same person I've been contacting back and forth about the height of the hose tower, she did ask about the signs. I got that email too late to dive into the signed bylaws. So I hope to be getting an answer returned to her by the end of the day tomorrow. But 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 if the signs don't meet the the general sign bylaws that we have in force right now, they will have to be coming for a variance.
Okay. I think for the the fire station, oh, sorry, Mark.
Yeah, one thing about the fire station tower, is there a possibility or is there already interest in plastering cell phone antennas all around the inside or outside of it, since it's a tall tower?
I have not heard anything of the sort. Keep in mind that if any kind of a cell installation is to be installed, I believe it needs planning board approval. So if that were to ever come across, I'm sure the planning board may have something to say about that.
Yeah, there are cell phone antennas on the old town hall, aren't there? Up top there?
Yes, there are.
There are, okay.
These things attract them like, yeah.
I mean, there there's a cell top, there's a cell tower in the church at forty Forty Church Street. It's 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 in the steeple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I I guess just so before that, do you think it would be possible, I don't know if anyone else would be interested in doing just like a quick tour of the property and sort of kind of trying to get a better feel for just the fire station layout before next meeting?
I, you want to tour the existing fire station or you want to? Okay.
The new, yeah.
You want to do a site visit with the architect? Is that what you're talking about?
Either the architect or whoever's going to be presenting the plan for our next meeting.
Okay. Well, if it's going to be a public hearing though, then it has to be you know, in the public realm. They can't give you the presentation privately. It has to be posted, maybe.
Okay.
You're you're welcome to visit the site, you know, on your own, but once the application is filed, then it goes into the public hearing realm. So there can't be any kind of private discussion.
Well, could could you or like, could you give us even a layout tour, Lori, or be like, this is where this is going to be, or maybe one or two of us that we're not breaking form?
Yeah, I mean, I I have the plans, of course, I'm not an expert, but I could I could eyeball it. It would be much easier to have that to, I mean, I can ask if before they file, although they're planning on filing next week. So that's the problem. So if you if you want to do it before they file, then it would have to happen within the next day or so. That might be a bit challenging to to organize that with the design team, because I know they're doing a mad push to get everything ready for next week.
We we can, we can follow up on email if that works. Mark, did you have something or is your hands? I don't have anything else for the meeting tonight, Susie?
Hey, I'll do a plug. I have some kindness week coffee hours this week, if anyone wants to come. I have a, I have two select two select board coffee hours with Laura and Lisa, which is eleven Thursday at Seleevee, and then our new chief of police is going to be at Gather Provisions, four o'clock on Thursday. And just because today was a really nice day, I want to let you know my other
And just because today was a really nice day, I want to let you know my other, um, the other committee, community affairs. Were hammering out our summer concert series, so I just wanted to get everyone excited about that because. It's almost, it's like nice weather, so even though, you know, we're just setting it up, we have the dates and all set and we're hammering out the bands and. It was a nice day today, so I just want to get everyone excited about summer, so. Even though it's February, huh?
Can you get Eric Clapton?
I mean, if I could, Bob, you know I would, I get, I do, I will tell you, you know, I, the bands I say no to go to Southborough, so. That is, that is like my claim to fame. I try to get the best bands in the area.
Oh.
So, I'm hoping, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get one of the concerts actually at the new amphitheater. And the, and the Gonk Plaque, so.
Yep, nice.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna try to do one there this year, so.
You could, uh, could like a launch party, grand opening party.
Yeah, but. That's it. Not zoning related, but you know, I gotta make a plug for fun stuff too.
Great, thanks Suzie.
Yeah.
Um. Anyone else have anything to add? Mark?
I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
Um, Mark made a motion to close the hearing, Brad seconded quickly. Uh, roll call vote. Mark?
I.
Brad?
I.
Uh, Jeff?
I.
Suzie?
I.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody, take care.